Call the Halifax Planning Board and discuss on all members present except for Mary. On the end, we have 7:00 PM, proposed zoning law, zoning bylaw change.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Do Chapter 167-7D, 15 marijuana establishments. 7:15, 135 Plymouth Street, Halifax cigar and smoke. 7:30, continued hearing for Rube Street Associates LLC. 7:45, we have continued hearing for elevated routes at 319 Monpont Street, site plan. And 8 o'clock, we have continued hearing for elevated routes, 319 Monpont Street, special permit from Marijuana Dispenser. On discussion, we have Astro Lane status, 5G, 40R. And we have March 3, 2022 amendments to approve and March 17, 2022 to approve. Do you have a motion to accept the agenda, or is that...
Motion to accept the agenda, but...
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Home table?
Aye.
Aye.
Notice of public hearing, the Halifax Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 21, 2022, at 7:00 PM at the Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, 0238. In the board of selectmen's meeting room, to see if the town will vote to make the change at their special town meeting to the Halifax zoning bylaw to include a limit on allowed marijuana dispensaries to the lesser of 20% of the number of stores allowed under MGL, Chapter 138, Section 15, or 2, as is allowed in the state's cannabis regulations. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Um, do you have a motion to open the public hearing?
I think we motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Home table?
Aye.
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 Do you have a motion to open the public hearing? The applicants of the proposed changes here?
Uh, I'm Brandon Key, thank you more from Flower Soul. I know Flower Soul is six minute, but we assume some of them come back.
I believe it was under petition.
Okay, so currently, the law, Chapter 167-7D, Use Regulations 15 Marijuana Establishments, says, "No marijuana establishment shall be located within 500 linear feet of any school or childcare facility where children generally congregate. Any other marijuana establishment or any establishment licensed to pour alcohol under the provisions of General Law, Chapter 138, 12. Distances shall be calculated by direct measurement of a straight line from the nearest property line of the facility in question to the nearest property line of the marijuana establishment." The proposed change would read as, "No marijuana establishment shall be located within 500 linear feet of any school or childcare facility where children generally congregate. Any other marijuana establishment or any establishment licensed to pour alcohol under the provisions of General Law, Chapter 138, 12. Distances shall be calculated by direct measurement of a straight line from the nearest property line of the facility in question to the nearest property line of the marijuana establishment."
So, so in that paragraph, there's no change?
That's correct. This is the continued, this is what they want to add on. "The number of marijuana retailers that shall be permitted in the town of Halifax is limited to the lesser of 20% of the number of licenses issued and/or authorized to be issued with the town under the Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 15, for the retail sale of alcoholic beverages. Not to be drunk on the premises where sold or too. Should 20% of the number of licenses issued be a whole number in one half or greater, the number shall be rounded up to the next whole number. Should it be less than one half, the number shall be rounded down." I feel as though we should, should we want to go over this one and then go over the one, the choice that they have for this?
Yeah, I think we'd have to address each one and then go on to the next one. I think it'll be easier to group them, but I think it's proper to go through.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, but...
It stinks because if you knew all your choices beforehand, it would be easier, but...
Correct, okay, so I'm just thinking.
All right, so the process for the public hearing is, the applicant or the proposer normally speaks to the article, and then the board questions and has comments on that, and then we open up the general public. So, did you say that you were proposing?
I didn't, forgive me, I apologize, board, I did not propose this. I was just here to, I'm part of the establishment that's on down the road here, so I just wanted to participate in the meeting.
Okay.
I apologize.
Down, down, down. So we don't have anybody here that was filed with proposal? From the audience? Right. So, open it to the board.
I feel as though it's a little wordy and maybe a little confusing.
It is because I think you could sum that up by saying you're still just limiting it to two, because you're not going to be higher than two with the 20% of what we have for drinking establishments or alcohol sales establishments.
How many licenses do we have?
Say, even if we had 10, right? Which I'm not sure, but you're not going to, it's either one or two, right? You're limited to the 20% or two, so it's either one or two. If you know what I'm saying? So maybe, maybe if you picked the 20%, that we would end up in the category that we actually had one, but... Two being max, no matter what?
I'm at eight in my head. Oh, wait a minute, I missed one, nine, 10, I think we have 10.
So it's... If this is the verbiage they used in the, in any sort of Mass Law or whatnot, then I can see why we just adopted word for word, because they've already written it. But I think no matter what, it boils down to, we will be limiting it to two. Just in case, because when you read it, you could think that maybe there's a chance there could be more than, because it sucks hope, but...
That was confusing, I remember thinking that. So when you were just counting the establishments, you're counting, like maybe the Halifax store down on 36 that sells alcohol, but also a restaurant? Okay, that's correct.
Like the Country Club?
Right.
Mobile Sales Bar, I believe?
Yeah.
And those, all of those establishments, Monpont's Liquid Slide Bill, Hominy, Think the Golf. Forgive me, Joe, I don't know what it's called, the golf place.
T-bones.
Thank you. So I tried to count all those, I might be off one or two.
But it does sound like if we add that paragraph, it will add retail sale alcohol on top of, where as of right now, it's only, only poured alcohol. So you would, you will, it will add that restriction, which would add...
Yeah, how many numbers for the...
Correct.
Yeah, I was just saying, but it wouldn't necessarily add the 500 feet. I don't think that the 500 feet would add...
The 500 would stay on.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't think it would apply, even though we're adding the retail sale alcohol beverages to the 20% number, we're not adding retail alcoholic beverages to the 500-foot setback.
Right, it's just for the number.
We just cancel it all, like...
Yeah, right, we're adding that type of establishment, but it would not add the 500-foot setback.
If we somehow interpret it that way, and I would too, yeah.
So this is one of the two proposals?
Yes.
Any discussion from the public?
Mel Conroy, 7th March Room. The marijuana industry is clearly a growing industry in the state. I heard a figure today that since it's been legalized, it's generated $3 billion in sales in the state of Massachusetts. Why are we as a board looking to create a hindrance for business to open in town that might be a tax generating revenue? We as a town struggle attracting businesses.
Well, first off, let me clarify, the board's not...
No, I know, but whoever the petitioner was, I think we're, I think we are potentially creating a hurdle for a potential business to come in town. I certainly, I certainly don't want to interrupt any of the businesses that's being done or will be done by the places to open up the street, elevated routes, et cetera. But this is clearly a growing industry. We as a town struggle to find tax generating businesses to come to town. The businesses are only going to invest in the town if they see an opportunity to turn a profit. There's only so many people in this town. Why are we creating an arbitrary number that is going to prevent a business from opening in town that can potentially lighten the tax load on the residents of the town?
Anybody else?
I just, Brandon McKee, I just want to say, I think this is pretty reflective of the cannabis control commission's language, or the state's language that exists that a lot of municipalities fell back on, so I think that is consistent. You know, I'm certainly pro-business, we're excited to get open and move here. I think most towns went with the cap, and I think that's because of those businesses that do open can have more of an impact. I think if it becomes open, and there's three, four, five, however it might be, you tend to see less commitment, because there's more. Whereas if there's one or two, you're gonna, those groups are going to be more committed to the town. I operate several of these already, in towns that have caps, and they've been very successful, municipalities have been very happy. We cut large checks, we go above and beyond the 3%. So I think from that, through that lens, there tends to be more impact from a limited number of groups. But that's just my two cents on it.
I would argue that a rising tide raises all ships, and not just the two that happen to have permits in town.
I think it's a fair point to point out, too, also as it is a newer industry that's recently become legal, that you got to start somewhere as a baseline or a standard deviation to start to figure out what's, you know, if you open it up for everybody. I'm, by the way, in agreement with what you're saying. But also with it being newer, you know, if you open the floodgates, and then it's much harder to restrict after you've opened it to everybody than it is to open up the gates as you go.
But I would argue that an open market restricts, restricts the business itself. Nobody's going to invest in the town, invest the millions of dollars that are required to open up an establishment. We are 7,500 residents, roughly. There's only so much water to be drawn from the well.
I'd like to add, Amy New, 19 second. So for fiscal year 20, 2020, marijuana revenue was 51.7 million for the state. For 2021, for the first year since legalization, they suppressed alcohol revenue with 122.4 million revenue for the state. That's more than 136% increase over fiscal years. And for just the first half of fiscal 2022, 74.2 million. So with all the budget shortfalls that we hear about in all of the town meetings, such a growing pie, I don't see why we would not to limit the town Halifax's piece of that.
I would also bring up, too, that there are a lot of other restrictions as far as the amount of establishments that would be able to open in town, I think would be limited if we did not add this number. Once you start adding in that 500-foot setback, the fact that we already have two and those are spread, I think you'd find that we'd be capped based off of the restrictions that already exist. From a geographical perspective? Yeah, very similar. So why make it harder than it already has to be, in case there is an opportunity and it's a third supply? And it does find that pocket, why are we, to sit here and say no? And there is no chance that we have, these next to each other, there is no chance we have a cluster of them. There are already limitations set.
And if I understand correctly, if we were to adopt this as a town, it would basically require either a special town meeting or a two-thirds vote to override existing law in town at town meetings. So you could be looking at a potential business coming into town that has to choose between fighting a two-year legal battle from start to finish to get the law changed, which would also hinder future development in town.
Costs a couple bucks, too.
Anybody else? All right. Want to move on to the other one?
So, the other change is also a petition change, and where we already discussed, should I agree with the whole thing?
No. Sorry, did I say that out loud?
So this change would be changing our current Chapter 167-7D Use Regulations 15 Marijuana Establishments to read that the first paragraph would be the same, and in addition to the first paragraph, it would state, "The number of marijuana retailers that shall be permitted in the town of Halifax is limited to two." And that was just more clear and concise than the other language with additions of the retailer as well.
So the change on this would be, those paragraphs would stay the same, and then the number of marijuana retailers shall be permitted in the town is limited to two. Discussion?
Again, I believe this is more straightforward. I don't know that it's required, again, with the amount of restrictions on them that already exist. I don't think that the town's in a position where they have to be concerned of a multitude of these popping up. Well, there's just, there's just so much revenue in this rising industry that the town could benefit from, you hate to handicap it.
Certainly, no doubt.
You know, and then obviously, it's, it's no offense, by the way.
Oh, no, of course.
First car, first served doesn't mean you're a good business. You know, or that there's not more area if it's, if it's allowed or if it can be found in town, and if it's something that can generate millions of dollars for the town, but we said, bah, back in 2022, we said two or nothing. I don't think that sets up the future of the town for growth opportunities. And there's still a chance that no one even proposes up there? If you know what I mean? But if somebody does, and they're a really good business, it's going to bring a lot, and, you know, not for nothing, but competition does drive revenue, you know? Exactly, and I'm stuff up with that game, right? Right? Doesn't hurt anyone in town. I see no reason to restrict it, personally.
Just one, one point, for everyone that opens, there's probably about 30 that fail. And so, which I live in open markets as well, complete agreement of that. The only risk you take with that is if someone, say, attempts to open a third, and they tie up property, and they just run out of money, or that something happens, and that space, so to speak, would be unavailable, or would have been unavailable to another potential business, but... So, you know, obviously, what we bring to the table is experience. I was one of the first 11 to open, and we have great relationships with all the wholesale vendors and such. So there's a lot of pieces to be successful. Complete agreement of rising tide, but it takes a lot to execute on this. And it does filter out the people that can execute and not, so...
So for complete transparency, just as, as a devil's advocate, right?
Yeah.
Let's say that you were just a little bit late to the game. You already had two. You bring all this experience, you know how to get it done, you got it. You come in and find the perfect location, and we go, sorry, we voted for two, and that's it. Now, those other two aren't as, at the level that you are, there's no doubt that you're going to be a great addition to the town, actually looking forward to having guys, right? But you were late to the game by just a smidge, sorry. And you're like, ah, I guess I'll go to Kingston, or Puntin', or whatever. So, just to play devil's advocate there for a minute, do we want to... Did we lose somebody good? In the sake of trying to, you know, what's that, is that all the same? Start creating too many laws and... There is, there is some freedom, the flexibility of the written law, so... Again, I can't even picture more than two, two, you know, statistically fitting. I bet you five years ago, nobody even, like, would be able to think to even have this conversation.
I was just saying, I was all of the setbacks. You know, Halifax, I think we've been having...
We're all on the same side.
And it messes with you.
Well, I was, I was negative 14, so I'll take your word for it.
I guess I would just add that regardless of how many are or not here, I would say that there's a, there's a cap on the tax revenue, right? There could be 10 here, but you're probably going to end up seeing the same amount of money through those 10 as you would through one or two. Which, again, shouldn't discourage anything, but just something to throw out there. There is a, there is a horizon, so to speak, and a cap to these things on a municipal level.
Yeah, I would think that there's going to be a max that you're going to draw in here, and the people are not going to drive it from Boston to come over here. They're not going to drive it from all of that town here.
Very agree with you, that's getting to you.
Well, I think we're also in a unique position where we have two businesses that are coming into town with successful stories from other communities, that somebody who says, oh gee, I could make money selling weed, they're going to say, wait a minute, I'm going up against these guys and these guys. I mean, you don't have, you don't have Kmart opening across the street from Walmart.
Or anywhere.
That's what you do. Yeah. So, I think because of the size of the town, you know, what Mark was saying is, I mean, it's not like we're going to have, we don't even have the space for 10, right? If I were in the bylaws. So would, you know, would, in fairness, would three versus two really impact, you know, the sales and the competition? I mean, I guess there's, if you're like, what a number, have that conversation.
I think just putting a number out there is retardation of your own industry.
On that whole thought process, I have a question that if you saw, say you don't have a cap, and you saw that there was multiple marijuana dispenser areas in town, would you want to come in and buy in that town if there was already a couple here?
There's so many factors, so that depends on the size of municipality. If the areas around it are opted in or opted out, you know, the moratoriums, I would look at the quality of the operators that exist there, what are they offering? Whole bunch of things, yeah, there's a lot to it. But I guess if there was...
Say it's here?
If it's here and it's two good players coming in, I'd probably say it's probably not worth it. It's a little saturated.
So it would decide for itself?
Potentially, yeah, convertible, yeah. I think a lot of municipalities that have several are starting to see that the forecasts just aren't there, that operators had anticipated, because it just comes right out.
Isn't there pretty much a cap on the revenue that's going to be drawn into Halifax alone?
Yes and no, I think, I think if you're really an operator digitally and have a great menu and great wholesale contacts, you can, you can draw from outside. But again, it just, there's so many factors to make, to execute on.
Like you drive to Harry's, a men's bra for chicken wings.
Well, Harry's is...
No, I'm just saying, right, but that's, that's a weird analogy, but, right? You drive to another town if you have, if you're loyal to a brand, you know? What if, so, I'm sorry, where was I hearing it?
Mel.
Mel? To Mel's point, I think that, you know, with the limited amount of businesses that we do have in town, what's to say that although there's no space now, but what if a, a business that's currently in operation goes out of business and that location opens up, and now there's another opportunity for a new player to come in that is in the cannabis industry, but we've restricted it? So yeah, although right now, there might not be the territory for it, but somebody could go up, I mean, Wyatt Art, right? Like, they went out of business, if that was the location, let's say it worked, somebody could fill that location, but we can't because we've restricted it to two.
Or if the daycare, all of a sudden, decided to move to a different place, it would open up the industrial area?
Okay.
Anybody else? Well, what this is, is the job of the planning board is to make a recommendation, whether we support it or not, and that recommendation will be made at town meeting. Is it the...
It's May 9, Monday, May 9, 6:00.
Is it the pleasure of the board to take their vote tonight, or take it at a time?
We have enough time, think about it, and vote on it next week? Especially just if we get a chance to hear from somebody who is, you know, for it, but...
Well, I'm going to ask it around town to neighbors and people that I've seen, and I've had some people not care, and I've had some people not. Some people want to limit it. However, I made them understand that they can watch this hearing also on YouTube, so that they can maybe hear some things that they didn't know, and some very good points that I didn't hear out on the streets, to be honest with you.
Just a point in order, this will require you to a better vote in town B.
Right. Town B, yeah. Yeah, I'm just, I'm really not sure what the concern of having multiple would be. But that's, that would be my thing, is I'd almost like to hear what the other side, the other perspective of it is, but...
The other perspective was worried, worried about marijuana being around. Even though it's legal, people...
It's 2022.
Right, but...
I get it. I'd give them to walk down the street in October when everything's budding in any neighborhood in this town.
I, I don't, I don't, I mean, personally, I would, I would have no problem saying I don't see why we need to put a specific restriction on it, because the town, the lands and the bylaws that are already in place are going to naturally create a restriction. That to add another paragraph in there, I just, I can't even fathom where more than a third one would even go, you know? And not to, because I, not to cut out a leg or a third of your business or potential sales either, because obviously, like I said, we want to support you in every way we can. I just don't think we have to worry about seven or eight of these, especially with such a big player like you guys coming in with an operation that is established. Even a mom and pop... Even mom and pop shop, it just must have.
I just want, I'm from all, I, um, I appreciate the big player, how it, um, we're mom and pop, like we're.
Yeah. No, I mean, it's, like, you've got your, you have your business plan. You're not just giving, you're not just winging this and hoping it works. Like you have, you know, a proof of concept is what I mean by, by that. And it was meant as a compliment.
No, I appreciate, I do, I do appreciate, yeah. I just, I'm not a, like a multi-state operator, yeah. Uh, this is all good places, you can, so, thank you.
Well, I mean, I know there are more places in town where it does fit, so, I mean, there's possibilities.
So more than three, four, five, six?
I mean, you probably could give four.
You could put a huge one at the old Bia's Restaurant.
I think it's within five hundred feet of a Korean restaurant. The old Bia's.
Oh, you're right next to elevator routes.
They're like right on the border.
Right on the border, yeah.
Yeah, funny.
Well, I'm just sick of looking at that. I saw for twenty-five years now.
It is under agreement. True? Yeah.
Yeah, good. I just, again, like to that point of.
I'm just saying.
Revenue gap of like, it's not, I mean, I've talked to people from Bridgewater. I'm like, I live in Halifax. And they're like, where's that? Like, right next door. I'm talking, you know? So I just don't see.
There was a hundred and twenty-four signatures on the, um, not the, the change for the number of marijuana retailers sexually committed in the town of Halifax is limited to. And there was thirty, forty, yeah. And then there was five, eighty-four, twenty-nine, forty-nine, fifty-four, sixty-one, sixty-six, eighty-six, ninety-one. And a hundred, a hundred and seven on the, where did you come up with all that?
Yeah, I don't think that's enough to sway up the decision.
No, just, just.
Just for reference, if it was, you know, a hundred and forty, forty, that'd be a little bit different. Or just that somebody tried a lot harder.
Right.
Don't knock that.
Right, right.
All right. Any other discussion? I see no other discussion. It's the board's pleasure you want to wait.
I'd like to think about it, try to more people in town.
All right. We'll vote at the next meeting before town meeting. Okay, so at this point then we'll close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing. Second.
Second.
All those are valid.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Keep it.
Now, if there was a growth, that's a whole other, uh, whole other conversation.
Hey, next up the address, um, three fifty-five Plymouth Street, Saginaw, Halifax Saginaw. Got the firm up on sign.
Notice of public hearing, the Halifax Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two at seven fifteen, seven thirty-five in the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall, four ninety-ninth Plymouth Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, on the application by best sign, on by best price signs and printing for a special permit to erect a sign for Halifax cigar and smoke located at three fifty-five Plymouth Street, Halifax, Massachusetts. Said property is owned by Bike Real T L L C, Joe Murray of Pingham, Massachusetts, as shown on assessment map sixty-three, lot thirteen. The applicant seeks a special permit to install an internally illuminated sign of reverse lit channel letters which violates Halifax Owning By Law, section one sixty-seven dash thirteen D, section two B. Exterior signs, general provisions, prohibited signs, area, zone, commercial, business. Petition number nine six seven. Do I have a motion to open this hearing?
Is there a motion? There's a, do, make a motion. Is there a second?
Sorry.
All those are valid?
Aye.
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 Okay, will we have to go again?
All right.
Can I just say, I'm Joe Murray from Bike Realty. First of all, thank you for, uh, listening in tonight and, uh, meeting with everybody. Um, I just had a question because we, we applied for the Dunkin' Donuts sign and the sign that's up there right now is the haloed sign. And actually in, uh, December of two thousand eighteen, Mark and Gordon actually were on, on board at that time. And there was a significant discussion about whether or not this was even a special permit. And if you read the decision from, and the vote from December eighteen, cause I brought that up. I actually have it with me too, just in case, but it actually was determined that it didn't have to be a special permit. It was allowed by writing because it was a haloed, so meaning that the lights don't pass through the letters. And that was on December eighteenth in, um, twenty eighteen. And at the time, when I was here, we own the building, we have other tenants. And, you know, we have a new tenant after, after a very long wait because we had to, you know, see if everything fit. And we're pretty excited that we actually have a space occupied and we're, we're happy to, to, to work with the smoke shop team, um, so it's been good for us. But when I was here last time, we asked if that could be approved for the new tenants, the remaining two tenants, so that the building could have the exact same sign style for all tenants. So I told our tenant, I said, this is the only sign that you can put up because that's what we have and that's what we want to approve. So I would just ask the board to, to kind of maybe make reference to that decision on December eighteenth, um, on December two thousand eighteen. I think it was the twentieth, if I'm not mistaken, but, um, and then we got actually approvals, I think in January, somewhere around January nine. And I, I know Mark, you were here and you can said, you just lengthy with your name a lot. And, and Gordon says, well, then there were some other planning board members, so. I, I'm not sure if anything's changed, but I just thought I'd just mention that before we get too far.
Because I'm still, sorry, I was gonna ask a question because obviously I wasn't here. What was the argument against having a halo light?
So the argument really comes down to the verbiage of a backlit sign. When it was originally set down, the backlit sign is what we all think of as that plastic sign with the fluorescent bulb behind it projecting the light through it. This, although they, it is sometimes referred to as backlit, the light actually shines backwards. So they call it backlit. It shines backwards, hits the building, not the sign, and then it creates the shadow effect. In my idea, the, what was proposed is not, is not what is restricted. The wording backlit is deceiving and there's no way that that was the intent because this type of sign didn't, didn't exist. Um, the type of, what was proposed is far less intrusive. There's far less light that actually leaves from it. It's a better looking light and it's definitely not the intent.
So I guess my question was if it was a lengthy conversation, was it just navigating through the, the verbiage?
I, I believe that was the toughest.
Cause it doesn't seem like it's that much of a, uh, conversation.
It is.
Especially if it's already been approved.
I believe Potter's was because it's, it said, it said backlit was not, and I, I think that was.
Internally lit.
Yeah, internally lit. Um, I believe that, that was the issue, but I, I assume what is proposed now is the same style that we approve.
I gave him my viewpoint sign drawings that I gave to you guys and said, this is all you can do. I said, don't, don't come to me with anything else. I know it was kind of difficult to say, but I was harsh on it because that's.
Well, you hear what, what it took to get the first one through.
And we actually, they, these guys wanted to have a different sign with a cigar on it and that. It's not gonna work because the, the numbers of letters in the sign. And if you recall, we actually proposed the largest sign that was gonna be frontlit. We shrubbed the signs so that we could shine the lights back. Um, and then the, the discussion was, I was given a permit to go ahead and have it. And then the zoning enforcement officer at the time said, no, I'm not exactly sure about this. So I ended up coming back to the zoning board and that's when the lengthy discussion happened. And, um, he, at the end of it, the final was, we were journeying from the special permit hearing and opened up the voting on just the sign permit. That's, that's how it reads when you, when you get the actual document. And I, the special, I'm sure you have it, but.
Yeah, special permit not being required because you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, yes, yeah. My name is, uh, Delice. I'm, uh, presenting the, this is our sign company.
Yeah, sorry, yes, yeah, yeah.
It sounds this guy. My, my boss did not count, so I'm replacing him. And just to illustrate the kind of sign we're talking about, you see the S? Uh, it shows a, a real one. There's a delight, uh, phone. You can see the, uh, what the backlit, uh, means. It's a, it's a LED, yeah. It's a, inside each letter is a LED, uh, circle of lights in, uh, point to, to the wall, to the back of the, the, the letter. And, uh, so the, the light is not pointing the street, it's not pointing faceward. It's pointing backward, making a shape like that, you said.
And the sign.
That was, yeah, that was Mark's point from before. It actually, and it's an excellent point. It's not everybody understood what haloed is. The end of result, it looks like it has a halo on the letter, but the actual line is actually aiming at the building.
What you're given is a bounce light. So forgive me again, for my, um, maybe lack of experience on the board, coming across here.
Signs is no deal, right?
Right. Um, does it need to be more complicated? Then this doesn't seem like something that needs to be discussed for the, it's the same sign that you already have. We already had a discussion about it four years ago. It's one that's shining back onto the building. It's a different kind of lighting with the originally discussed. Set the precedent in eighteen that it didn't need a special permit, same building, same owner, with strict guidelines, the sign, in fact, the company is here to explain that. I don't want.
Have you been buying, seen the normal sign?
I haven't, I mean, I go to that dunks pretty often. I've seen this, actually I was in a, in a wait line. I was like, oh, that's cool. It's nice to see that, but no, I guess I haven't gained enough attention to it because it doesn't shine directly in my face. The only thing I can, just to double check is the, the size, right? So our size is based off side of that wall of that building?
And, and that's where I can't speak to that. That's really the petition, man. I, I, all my comment was whatever size is allowed is what you can give us. And that's where I moved on. The rest of it is how the signs are structured, but the, the size is up to the board.
So, so I believe that was another thing. Uh, running this, filling in on what took so long is the, the building has like a, I don't know, two ten foot mile of forty-five on the planet. So it was a question of whether or not they should get the, the front of the building, what you see perpendicular to the road versus just that short section of the building. You know, so where they wanted it was on the angled part of the building.
I think where we have to be careful, because originally what I was thinking of as, as I was sitting in the, the wait line for dunks was the location is not, you're barely gonna be able to see it from the road anyways because of that location, but that's it. Make a judgment off of that because then you start getting into the next person that positions or something. We're saying, we're saying if you did it for him, it's like, well, they're in a different spot. So we're gonna stick to the letter of the law. That's one thing, but we already did that in eighteen. So to be, to be fair, and I think to your question, have I noticed the dunking donuts? And I think the fact that I haven't, and it's not just because I'm a boarder. It doesn't stick out and go, wow, what the hell is that doing there?
For all you Dunkin' Donuts too, so it's not like you're sitting there studying it.
But that's not the usual dunking donuts.
No, it's, it, that sign, we, we do those signs in one other community. It happens to be Wellesley. And, and they're haloed.
It looks like the Halifax.
CBS does it. It's Wellesley Halifax, same difference.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, property taxes are.
If you go to CBS, almost all the CBS can do the same thing. If you go to Carr, rather than Carr, and if you go there, it, it's almost the same thing. Plymouth, same thing, and you know, they have front lit, front lit, you know, all over Plymouth. You, I'm sure you're familiar, but in the CBS is, it's what we call the haloed. And, and the fact that you haven't noticed the sign is because it's tiny. It's probably smaller than the gas station location.
Yeah.
And it's a two thousand square foot dunking, but we, we did exactly what we were allowed to do and no more.
Everybody knows it's a dunks though by the five hundred yard line, that's a down with one of six. It's another conversation. No, I, I mean, it's not like you're gonna see it from Route Three. You know, I don't, I don't see a problem with it, but that's, I don't wanna jump the gun either if, if I'm skipping ahead. That's all, so.
Running historical district after. What used to be the historical.
Tiva Yoh, Minister of. I'd like to ask a question. Um, I welcome the new business to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
And, um, I hope you do well. Um, I, if this sign is gonna be like your Dunkin' Donuts sign, I wouldn't object to it. But there's one request I have, and that's your open sign. Could that be on one stationary color instead of the flipping?
Okay, yeah.
Oh, different colors?
Yeah, thanks.
That's my only request.
Yeah, no, it's all, yeah, yeah, there's, yeah, it's all a huge, yeah, it's got a steady life.
Yeah, I mean, you come in the living room and now you can see.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be clear at Christmas time. So is it that there was a special permit that we need to adjourn from to then pass that as a fair? Or is it just making a motion to accept the application to have the sign that, as it was proposed?
Well, I don't think, we don't need this question.
No, I know. What I'm saying is the last time you need to adjourn or declare that there wasn't one needed. So I just wanna make sure I'm going forward.
Metabolism of the signs, we always have signs.
One sixty-seven, I think.
And, and the whole reason they're here is because the blue inspector has denied them under one sixty-seven, thirteen D, two B, signs which are internally lit upward. So the fact that the bulbs are protected by the housing, I didn't consider the same thing.
And by the housing, you mean the casing of the sign?
So the, the actual letter itself and then the.
Right.
Yeah, the bulb is secured inside that letter and shines back.
Right.
Again, I think the other, the reason was to stop the internally shining forward, you know?
Like almost like a clear tinted front that's shining out through.
Yeah, so again, yes, I guess you could say that the light is inside it, but it is not.
That's the discussion we had before.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be painful for the sign guy to listen to us trying to navigate around what it means. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, but, okay, uh, the, the letter shape is like a channel, yeah, so for this reason they, they are called channel letters. And the LED lights, it's, uh, are fixed on the wall, on the back wall that is the front of the ladder. And there is like two walls, uh, limiting, yes, narrowing the light.
To make it shine.
Yes, with only a extra space, uh, with a light area.
Which is determined by how far out the light is from the wall.
Yeah.
And how far does the sign stick out from the building? And how far does the sign stick out from the building wall?
It's like a four, four inches, three, four inches. And the letter has a...
To the sign face, to the front of the sign face? So from the wall to the front of the sign face?
Yeah, because one of my bylaws says six inches is the most. So that's why I want to make sure.
And by the way, the sign is UL set fire, so it's fireproof. And it's LED, so it's don't warm up. Like no bulb lights. It's, and it saves a lot of energy. It's pretty durable, it's less long.
So, not sure I can check it out with you.
Yes, I hope you take a note. Yeah. Hey, stop.
I don't think we have it.
Something fine?
Uh, we don't have that. We don't have the file on the, on the building, correct?
No.
You said you brought it with you? You said the previous...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I can bring it up. Yeah, it's on my laptop, though, but I can email it or you can take my laptop and read it.
I'm not touching my laptop. No way.
Come on! Um, do you, how do you want to...
Get an email?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Do you want it emailed to you?
No, to you, because you have yours and I have mine.
All right.
Will you share with us?
It's like your tablet, it doesn't matter to me, but it's, it's up to you guys. But it's all the way at the very end here. You actually made the line mark, so... Yeah, but help yourself, yeah. And you can just scroll like an iPad, so...
Is that the minute?
Yeah, so...
Basically, we're going to have to determine that it's not an internally lit sign, it's a backlit sign.
So I made a motion to determine that the halo lighting... Now, then I asked if we had to close the hearing first. So it seems like if I wasn't sure what I had to do on that one. Yeah. It was funny the way it was kind of worded, but...
So that we don't keep presenting this again?
Okay.
We're going through the bylaws.
We approve the light as an illuminated sign, which is allowed by right in the business district. So I would say that we, we closed the public hearing, reopened the regular meeting, and the motion was to approve the lighting as internally, as an illuminated sign. Now I would feel comfortable...
So we can give a motion to...
Thank you. Yeah, now, so are we doing a further discussion from the...
Oh, do you mind if I do that before you shut it down?
Oh, no, no. I have to close Netflix, though. Just kidding. Mind the fact it was not very clean?
I don't want to see the discussion.
Want to see it?
No.
I have my utmost faith in my colleagues. I just don't want to read all these pages of sign. I just, it's... Sorry, sorry, if I would make some opening did.
Okay.
So now we have to close the public?
I think we should take the action on the public hearing.
And to the building inspectors' point, he's not wrong. By the way, by the way, the bylaws are written, so that's why I moved them in line, correct? So it's, it's just more of the interpretation of upgraded bylaw by terminology, or newer advancements in lighting.
Right, and we're trying to take care of that on the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, right, right.
Okay, so...
Okay, so make a motion to closing hearing?
Well, we shouldn't.
Oh, discussion.
We should take the vote on the...
Quotition?
I know.
To not, not issue it and not close it.
So we're going to make a motion, right? So I make a motion to not...
Make a motion that we don't believe that we need a special permit for this sign due to the updated technology.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 This is good to happen before the bylaw committee. Make a motion to close the hearing?
So second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to open the hearing?
Sound off.
Second.
On second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So in regards to the sign that you're proposing?
I'd make a motion to approve the illuminated sign as proposed.
And then to add to that, that due to new technology, just to be safe, this is why we're agreeing to it?
Or are you calling it by the title? The reverse lit channel letters? Or is the channel letters the style?
It's the style.
Like the font? Or is it how...
No, it's the kind of...
So I'm open to all the additions except for I would prefer to just do exactly how we did the other one.
Yeah.
If you're cool with that. Like just the motion was approve it as an illuminated sign.
Because who knows where it's going over here?
Right, right. You know, just...
All right, I can do that one.
You know, you...
Yeah, because we're going to do, and, yeah, okay.
So I'll be second, Mark's first.
Why don't we say the motion, so...
Okay, I make a motion to approve the illuminated sign as proposed.
Second.
For, for 355 Plymouth Street for the Halifax cigar and more.
Okay, and the motion is a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Yeah, you're a great... Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
That's all, right?
Yeah.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. I'll turn it up prior.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Fixation we hear from team unitary of the hearing for Wood Street Associates, all of C.
Thanks for agreeing to continue the hearings this evening. Sorry, I, uh... Maybe pull the chair off on the side just a bit, so... Sure. Yeah, so you may remember my brother coming in to present on this plan a while ago, asking whether it would be appropriate to ask for, depending to our special permit existing. And this is, I guess, the opportunity to report having to, I mean, I have the opportunity to study the plan a little more detailed way to, as I understand it, the decision about whether they grant that, that modification. So this is a reminder, the plan, what we're doing is the in-place cyclone capable, contemplated using this entire area then, fence for solar, certainly constricted inside of the array and also where the modules to run in the north-south direction, within the using, similar trackers instead. And so, yeah, just a little recap, once this is proposed.
So that's the proposed change?
This is the proposed.
And we have the original?
The original? Not sure the original is in there. It is, but you don't believe so, no.
I believe that the change was just on the location of the arrays and the angle?
Yeah, really, it's just, instead of running east-west, they're running north-south. And we pulled the array footprint out of some areas.
Less square footage.
Less square footage, exactly.
Joanne, is this just the new folder?
That's everything.
That's everything, right? The original one was proposed from before?
Yeah, everything is in that folder.
These are the ones I think I see the check.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
There's all Chris'...
These are all... These are all large, large separate.
Yeah, these are correct.
So we don't have anything from the original?
No.
Would it be, uh, any of them?
So we have an approved plan that we should have? Because this would be all changes?
Yeah.
Yeah, sometime, at least a year after that. It's tough, I may be able to email this later, that's...
Or does it need...
Yeah.
What's that, what do you want to do?
Yeah, it's just, I guess, we can go online, right? So it's Brendan, he already had a deal with... That's, I'll have it. At Halifax, okay.
Boy, Caesar, wouldn't it be great if we all had laptops?
Oh, hey, we should talk about that.
Wonder if it'll come up in the poll?
I'll see it on the...
I'm going to text them. Check a minute.
I don't watch your tweets, but I just, you know.
And I will, I'm going to, um, so at least the point you're sure of.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, right, it's for the new, it's for the new guy.
So it's now on?
It's now new?
Yeah, it came through. It, it came through, but it won't let you click on the link. So it came in first, and then it says these products are... Yeah, so, and then this pops up. And it was, yeah, 12:15? Remember? Wouldn't the original be in... It's probably fine, but...
Shall we, so Al, 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 Alpar?
I think between... Okay, when would the original have been sent? What do you think?
Twenty twenty.
Yeah, October twenty twenty.
Twenty one, then?
I just searched, I just searched, uh... Oh, man, I wasn't on the board, so I forgot.
But on the web, China, when on trees and...
Okay. So I'm right here, I'm on the town, I'm on the Alphac. Where would it be? I just tried to send it to the... Where on? You just said, you said you just had to... Try to...
So I am able to hold up an old client screen here. That was the original cyclone type plan. Looks like... Right, so this, this top section here, this remote, and... In northeastern. Technically, it's a lot less intense now. Correct, yeah, it's definitely less intense. But any, any roadway, which would be my... Any roadway or access would be the same.
But any any roadway, which would be my, any roadway or access would be the same.
Correct.
You have this coming down here and that's your only crossing still?
It's crossing crossing and then it drives back up.
Yeah, there's there's an initial prospect here that was already again.
Does the road after it crosses the wetlands still go up through those solar panels that you have right there? Okay, because it's just.
This is also, this plan is also considered by the council at their last meeting. My understanding is that they're gonna issue your conditions, they just have to sign up at their next meeting. Brendan, that come through?
It didn't.
Put her file, so. Yeah, yeah, sorry to say, but.
It seems like the proposed changes don't have a big impact on the site. If anything, we are actually using less square footage, so there's no change in disturbance, no change in.
Supposed to be less than.
Correct, it it seems that. Yeah, that would be my concern, is you didn't have to change any of the the critical features, you know, the crossing was there, the road proposal.
Wouldn't you change the panels? Yeah, so now, now we're wanting to be able to make a smaller footprint.
That's right, yeah. They are following the sun. The difference is, yeah, they're articulated, they follow the sun from east to west. So we use less panels to get the same.
That's just something that probably will become more efficient since the original proposal, something.
Yeah, it's something that honestly, the the single axis tracker technology is a lot more common in the southwest square, there's just sunnier. Because it is a bit more expensive to do, but it's making its way up to the northeast like as, you know, the technology is better than before more of them. So it's something that we're starting to start to consider out here. Yeah, definitely less here produces more power, smaller footprint.
And you have capped it, you know, how you can reduce?
That's right, yes, one point five megawatts AC.
Now, is this good, has this been to the selectmen and approve this at this point?
That's my understanding, yes. We've we've already received the specialties for the site plan approval. And this is just asking for, you know, a minor modification to it.
So board of selectmen is already done up?
This is, this is more board of assessors issue than board of selectmen.
Just just in terms of the the assessment of it or?
Well, there's not this, this whatever agreement for megawatt usage or assessment of taxes or or whatever. It's really the assessments issue, it's not really the board of selectmen, there's nothing before the board right now.
Right, yeah, and there's, as of, I mean, yeah, it's not a fine court matter, but the, you know, in terms of the assessment, there isn't, there isn't, obviously, so we haven't agreed to, you know, you know, the tax treatment or anything like that. Or started this discussion, it's already.
Your proposal is the same amount of wattage than that was before, I assume?
I think the the physical footprint is smaller, the wattage is also smaller. Maybe that's because the size of the interconnection limitation has come down. We got some feedback from National Grid that they couldn't accept quite as much power as we originally intended on the circuit there, so. Side of the system from that perspective has come down too.
Do you have storage on site? Are you guys doing battery backup on site?
We will, we will do a battery system on site, yes.
I think you had a location on there before for that too, right?
Yep, so the location of the battery is gonna be down down here, bottom of the site.
That you played with the fire department?
We have not gotten a building permit for it yet, so we have not received our our sort of blessing from the fire department for that. But that's certainly, we've actually, we have reached out to the fire department and let them know that a battery is coming. We're candidly still selecting the manufacturer, and so, you know, that that dialogue, I think we wanted to get through that procurement process before we.
Certainly present what you're actually.
Exactly, yeah, we want to make sure that, because each each manufacturer will be able to list out, like, they're, we'll show you all certifications, their national fire code certifications, things like that, so.
So the change in grade does not change any of the proposal for the battery storage or?
No, it did.
Yeah.
Yeah, the same spot doesn't change the chemistry or the. Size of that system really anyway.
Something we could look at.
Yeah, and the fire chief let me know that there's one operating already. At least you kind of seen one come through and. Could just be, I mean, it's, compared to the two, it's a little bit straighter, so it kind of just goes up that way. So it's just this sort of hill, easier sense of, I think that's really just to avoid. So, you know, actually, I just, I just realized the. I think that was. Yeah, that's the, that's where the battery is here, right? That kind of makes sense, right? I assume that's usually more accessible. Yeah, I just, the reason to move, I just want to, the reason to move that infrastructure down here is because in this architecture, you're trying to essentially locate it all. You know, just geographically, spatially, it's a little bit more centralized. You're not running something from way out here all the way back to.
So that's just more of a central location.
Definitely a lot of meat in this stuff.
And then the other thing was they were gonna be, is this smaller, they were gonna be more more one in each?
You know, that's that's not something we're actually gonna pursue any longer. It's just gonna be a standard, you know, groundhog system. We we explored it and hopefully manage to be coming to it, so.
But you do have to mow every so often?
We do have to mow, yeah, just to maintain the vegetation, but the the concept at the time we were exploring was you actually try to cultivate some sort of crops underneath and just for the right. Yeah, exactly, it's, that's definitely played a part, so.
All right, so on the the change of the location of the battery storage system, does that also, or does that now eliminate a proposed gate?
That was.
There is, I still note about a gate here.
All right.
Yes, I don't think you're proposing that.
So that change and then just add a temporary turnaround, which just during the construction, I assume?
Yeah, exactly. Is the temporary turnout proposed here in this section necessarily allowed for just during construction?
But on this plan, just below there, that crossing is. Right, right above there, it shows. And go up over there. Just below that crossing. See the white crossing right there?
Uh, yep.
Just below that, it shows.
There is, there is a little one shown on this point too.
So people are maybe that place.
That's correct, yeah, it's tough to see if there's anything probably in the things that show fans.
The driveway?
No, this.
The different forms is. Yeah, yeah, like there is no.
There is not, no longer one depicted, and then they just have a post-construction tree line. Okay, so this really. Okay, the difference being, right? If this, this area with the wooden vegetation, whether or not we have a slightly different protection on this, we do not come that far west. And I don't think it applies anymore. So these are off the property, that's the only spot where this border exists on. So you see here on the thing, which is now in the legend, it doesn't exist. So I believe that would be. No, 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 see, so look, you see what I'm saying, you see how far away that is in that tree line, which is that border? It does not, see what I mean? It's not on the plan and, yeah, it's kind of. This, this, so this point is what we. Yeah.
Right.
I'll ask a question. The site, the original site, and this is what we just discussed, I'm gonna ask this then, what I just asked you. What we approved has a bigger footprint than what they're approving now. So what they're approving is, I'm sorry?
Proposing.
What they're proposing is smaller and within the site plan of the bigger one that we've already approved.
Yeah.
Okay. Educate me on why it would need to go to peer review?
I I think it's just to to ensure that there's no other changes that we're not seeing. And I think, so I think.
Because the whole legend is completely different than what is currently there on the new plan.
So I, yeah.
Like, everything's different.
But I don't, I agree where I I believe the new proposal has less impact. And I just want to, I just want to make sure that all of, all of the main things like the access roads and things like that haven't changed. So that that's my only concern is that it seems like it may be more than just the areas.
And then this doesn't take the dive back to the left, it goes straight. The road changed, so it doesn't go to the left, it goes straight.
The exit, which is still through.
It goes straight, yeah.
Which still through the original.
It's still through the original provisional.
But it could be different, like as far as well and things like that.
But if it was already approved on here?
But the road changed.
Right, I I'd say that the, just the the way that we've tried to design this is to kind of take a Brendan's point, to stay within the limits of the old construction, which stays outside of the boundaries of any of the wetlands or setbacks and things. And so I'm certainly happy to have it reviewed further so that we can make those changes. And if there's, you know, any guidance that you have us to. Yeah. If you'd like to, if you'd like us to try to marry the legend from, you know, sort of the approved plan to the current line or, you know, anything like that, I'm happy to, you know, have our engineer take a look at that.
So also, to bring you back up, this has come up the last few months, anytime there's been a change in a site plan, we we basically mandated it go to a peer review. So it doesn't seem as though we're favoring one in sake of a neighbor or such.
Yep.
So to keep it honest across the board, we're saying that there's a change, so we're for the site peer review so that we can not just say it was all signed off on and we clearly have no qualms with that.
Sure. Wait, I just ask, what what is involved with the peer review? Is it, are you an expert to take a look at it or another engineer?
We signed it out to another engineer.
Okay.
And I'm sure he probably reviewed this the last time, so, you know, just be, we give the update.
Okay.
No, he's on vacation right now, so I don't know if we make the next meeting or not. Might be the meeting after that.
Okay, well, let us know if we can help with that process in any way. You know, like I said, if there's, you know, presentation matters, you know, like legends, aligning sort of details like that, let me know and we can get that taken care of.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to send the modified site plan for peer review at Amory Engineering.
The motion is the second.
A second. All on table?
Aye.
Aye. And he could be full contact with you, we don't have to wait till the next meeting for that, so he finds something.
Yeah.
You know, reach out to us.
Right. So they'll have to start a account with Joanne or?
Do we already have a revolving account?
I don't think we do for, I don't think we do.
Okay.
For all we do, but yeah, I'll check that and can contact you.
But if we can get him back in after the next meeting, because it is able to, we can reach out to you and get you on the agenda for that.
Yeah, candidly, that, you know, the time would be appreciated, you know, with us reviewed, so we wouldn't, if we can do that.
I believe it'll be back on the twenty fifth, I'm not saying that that guarantees yet a chance, but at least there's some days in between.
Yeah, certainly, the twenty to the day.
Yeah, not me. Not me.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So can I give you any information?
I'll contact you, your channel.
Yep.
So I'll, I'll contact, I'll contact Amory, I've passed on and what he's saying, so the twenty fifth, which is Monday. So he'll be back.
Sure, yeah.
We're not sure about the revolving account, I'll have to check out to see if. Actually, they're twelve hundred.
Okay. All right, sounds, sounds good, thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
So the motion to accept the letter of mutual agreement, which has been signed by the applicant for thirty days.
I'll, I'll move that.
So it's been moved, is the second?
Second.
All on table?
Aye.
Aye. We also have. We have elevated boots next.
Try to make it open.
Um, so the first one is elevated roots for the site plan. And they've asked for an extension, they sent in a letter of mutual agreement for extension of the site plan, a sixty day. Elevated Roots LLC, three nineteen Mon Ponset Street. Uh, petition twenty-two, S P, uh, two seven. I have a motion to accept. Is your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So do we need to get open the hearing and, um, schedule it for the next, continue it to the next?
This, for the special permit, yes.
Go ahead to read that.
We haven't talked in the review interviews before.
So should I, um.
For the second.
Should I read that whole thing back in the hearing? Open it.
For the continuation?
Yeah. I did have it, and then make it up.
Yeah. Is anybody here for the, here for elevated roots?
No.
On behalf of the owner or are you just in general?
In general.
I'm here for that, yes. Can I ask a question, please? Was that, was that extension relative to the site plan review or to the special permit?
Site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Um, our site plan, we have to make a decision in forty-five days.
Hmm.
Now forty-five days will be up, so we give us an extension for that. Site plan, a hearing's been opened and we have ninety days after we close, the hearing is still going on.
Hmm.
It's been continued tonight, they've asked for extensions for that as well, because the site plan's not ready, so we're just doing the two together. So if there's anybody here for elevated roots, they're looking for an extension.
Halifax Planning Board will hold a public hearing on third day, April seventh at twenty-twenty-two, which was continued to tonight, April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, at seven forty-five. It's currently thirty-five, we're a little behind schedule. The board of selectments are in the meeting room at Halifax Town Hall, four ninety-nine from the street to Halifax, on the application by elevated roots. To LLC owner, three nineteen Mon Ponset LLC, for a marijuana establishment to be located at three nineteen Mon Ponset Street in Halifax, as shown on assessment map sixty-three, lot twenty-seven, book four zero two nine, page five, to obtain a special permit is defined under Halifax owning bylaws, sections one seven, one sixty-seven dash three and one sixty-seven dash seven, schedule of use regulations, special use regulations for marijuana establishments. The applicant is seeking to operate an adult-use retail marijuana, that's right, area-owned business, to have a motion to open this hearing.
Motion, is your second? Second. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. So now we just continue it and.
Okay, our next meeting is May fifth.
Probably set my key, but. That's Charlie's site plan feature. Well, now we have it. Thanks.
We don't have anything on their agenda yet, correct? So.
That's what they were hoping for, they want on from May fifth.
Yep.
Seven, seven o'clock.
Then we could put them on first.
Or seven fifteen.
Yes.
So they'll need four for seven, seven fifteen?
Make a motion to continue this hearing, do I repeat that again? Motion to continue this hearing for elevated roots to May fifth, twenty-twenty-two, in the selectments meeting room at Halifax Town Hall at seven fifteen P M.
Is motion is your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Is there an extension on the, um, thing that we have to sign as well?
Not for the hearing because we have ninety days after the hearing, we're still.
Got it.
Yeah, question for you, man.
Sure.
Lord, uh, so there's been, this has been an ask for a sixty-day extension on the site plan review. And, and, but it's also been asked that the special permit for this establishment is going to occur on May fifth, so are both going to occur on May fifth?
Yeah, the extension is to give us an extension to make a decision on it.
Okay, I see, I see, okay.
So we're gonna run out for a decision tonight, so we have to make a decision.
Hmm.
For the forty-five days, so they gave us an extension of sixty days to give time to have the hearing, to have another meeting, discussion and get their, um, their, their hearing going at, at the same time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next is. That's right.
We're gonna pass you on.
Thank you, boy. Appreciate it.
So as, I was looking through the, um, book tonight, we actually do have a covenant in here, however, I did research and, um, found the covenant at the registry of deeds. So I have it printed right here.
Thank you.
And I have it printed for the board. Is that anything else we have to mention?
We are, I'm thinking. I have those two. This is the thing about what's supposed to be attached though.
Yeah, I'm doing more research, but at least we have the covenant now, um, but it is now appeared in our book plate as well. Interestingly enough. Because I went to the town clerk's office today and they didn't have it, and I went to the assessment office today and they didn't have it.
I did the same last week and they didn't have it. Um, I went to the building inspectors and nothing in there was signed anymore and I was told that the planning board office was closed when I was here, so I couldn't see what was in there. Um, so I also submitted a public records request to find it because stuff that I've had in the past seems to have just disappeared.
So I will be continuing to do more research to find more of the registry.
Okay. Um, as far as progress, there's been no progress at all since we were last here. We still have huge piles of brush everywhere.
Uh, is that the company, um, peer review?
You can't even drive down the street anymore without.
Yeah, there's cones everywhere.
It's, it's worse than when he started, before he started.
He did something to the sewers, each sewer, he ripped them up and then he put a cone on each one and he hasn't been there.
He raised the covers.
So was he?
So when is he gonna level them off, is it gonna stay like that forever?
Yeah.
I mean, it's an ice door, it's worse now.
Yeah. And then he took all the beautiful trees around the basin, what was the, what was, why was that necessary?
None of that's supposed to be there.
Okay, but we have kids that are storming it now, going in it and playing, they think it's a big, big, huge playground. So why, I see, we've been in multiple subdivisions, looking at houses and there's trees around.
They make it presentable, now it's an ice door.
This looks like it was bonded, it's just terrible.
Well, it should have been mowed right along. And that's how, that's how it was designed to be.
I think, who, who told him to go in and wipe out all the trees, like why was that a plan? What was?
Because, because he has to bring that basin back to where it was supposed to be. It's not supposed to be overgrown, that stuff is growing in there, it's not supposed to be there.
Okay.
It's supposed, those sides are supposed to be mowed.
So we're, it's supposed, we're supposed to be able to look at a big hole like that, even though we had beautiful, beautiful grown pine trees that were just made of gorgeous landscape, that doesn't seem, what, like what's the?
Be, because it's supposed to be maintained and, and mowed, that's, that's how the basin works.
Okay.
It's not supposed to have trees growing up through there because the only thing that's gonna do is.
So will there be a fence around it eventually?
There's not a proposed.
Oh, there's nothing?
All right, so as far as this street being done, why isn't the street gonna be done before he's allowed to build? Because you know it's the last lot, so everyone else that walked away, this is the last lot.
I understand, I, I feel your pain, I've been on this board all the time.
Oh, just because he has a bond, he could be never net bond, he'll never get bonded again, or you'd have a tough time getting a street if he'd be next on it.
I understand.
Did he say he was gonna do the bond?
The, the problem is, the state law says that he can bond to do that lot, it's the state law.
Can't the town say street first, then built?
We can't, I mean, I'm telling, I'm telling you what the state law says. He can put up a bond to, to get that lot revised.
I think part of the problem is the covenant, so he had to have everything done for twenty-four months.
And that was four half.
Four and a half years ago.
And he wasn't the owner of the lot at that point in time and which is another issue altogether, but we can't go back in time and fix things, so here we are today. And we have somebody that's willing to do these things, the bond there now, which is better than the law.
The bond's not there yet.
Because he doesn't, I don't have to make it until we figure out the cover, to make sure he covers it.
We, we have, we have the review engineer going out there to give us an assessment of what it's gonna cost to finish that road. And then we're gonna put a contingency on top of it because we cannot go out there and hire somebody to finish that road with the same kind of money that he got. The town has to buy, it has to pay prevailing wage, everything's more expensive than the town is gonna do. So that cost all has to be calculated into it, and that's what's gonna be a bond.
I think part of the reason we're pushing so hard for the covenant is to make sure we're supposed to be there at fifty-five now. And I think maybe that was misunderstood last time when I was here, because the, the fact of the kids getting hurt kind of maybe overshadowed that, but we wanna make sure that the fences that work in the covenant are included in what he does, not just finishing the road.
The covenant for, the road for the covenant that's your neighborhood covenant, there's difference. There's, there's, there's neighborhood, there's, there's the road, right? And then you have, when you have a subdivision, there's a set of rules, like you can only have, for instance, twenty-five hundred square houses and two car garages and.
I don't, I don't, I don't believe that.
So what, what it plus prior to, and I have parts and pieces from my research over the last fifteen years, is we were supposed to have, we said building lighting, we were supposed to have trees planted, the rating on the water intention area was supposed to be a certain grade, which in the last armory thing that we have, that it was not that great. Um, there were supposed to be fences in certain places to protect against all this stuff, so we're trying to just make sure he gets a bond for the entire package and not just this street.
We don't use this document though, because in this document here, it doesn't say in the back, and this is reported in the registry of deeds.
That's what we're trying to figure out, because I have parts and pieces of the original one.
Were they recorded?
I have no idea, that's why I didn't.
This is the one that's recorded. This is the registry of deeds, this is recorded.
Well, I'm not sure why this one had that, it happened to report all of it together. But there is a site plan, and it's supposed to be attached to this, and I have the cover sheet of the site plan, and there is also a order of conditions, which lists each and every item that is supposed to be done.
That would be the order of conditions from.
From the town planning board, from two thousand per year.
So, so you're asking me that, or us to find the order of conditions?
Yeah, I sent it over last week because, and I sent over what I have, the parts and pieces that I have, but none of it is to be found in the contract.
I was only looking for the covenant.
So.
I thought that's what you were missing.
Have you been in touch with him?
The whole.
John Pecat, is that his name, have you, has he?
Pecat, he was at the last meeting.
Yeah, okay, so what's his intention?
We have not talked to him since then, he came in, you, you were here for him. Uh, his intention is to finish the road.
Okay.
He wants to, what he had told us, he was gonna go in there and do the work and not do the, what he said here was, he was not gonna do the finished pavement until he got the house done. He was gonna bond for that.
Okay.
Maybe it was that second, second level out of, of the third level?
It's the finish coat, right.
So is there any way we can kind of tailor that and say, can you put in, can he do one coat and then when he finishes the house, do the finish coat? How many coats is it?
There's gonna be one more coat.
Oh, oh, it is?
Yep.
It's so bad, it, it looks like it needs.
It needs some leveling course, but.
Oh, okay, okay.
But actually, the road, I went out there, the road is not really in tough shape for,
Did you get your windshield checked?
Yeah.
I had two chaps in my windshield, gotta fix once, now the chip again, when you get behind the screw, that's when it comes down, it spits up rocks at you.
No, I, I understand that, what I'm talking.
Don't say the road's good, it's not.
I'm, I'm talking, I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the base coat of the road. There's places that need to be fixed, I'm not gonna argue that, but in general, the road is in good shape. The base coat is in good shape.
Or it's aged, like.
Or, or fourteen.
And for the base coat, I think it's also, where you're not gonna have that, that.
How many barrels you have in front of your house?
Yeah, and then we have.
I don't have any barrels in front of my house and I understand where you're coming.
Well, this will be the last winter, there'll be a barrel on my street.
No, no, look, I.
I guarantee that street is not done when our house is sold.
Yeah, it's just.
So we'll, you'll sell it, we'll get bonded again.
Why isn't he here with the bond, I thought, did you guys agree on that or?
Wait, no, no, no.
Oh, process, okay.
Let me, let me back up for a second, we have it out to the review engineer, the review engineer is on vacation this week, okay? He has not gotten back to us with that figure. Our next meeting, we'll have that back here.
Okay.
John Pecat will have gotten a copy of it prior to our meeting and he will be here at the meeting. I invite you to come on back when he's here, you know?
So who owns that street now, is that a private street?
So, yeah, we technically a private road, can we call ourselves a private road?
You are?
Okay.
So I can, I can park all my cars in front of that wall.
We're here because you don't wanna not get plowed.
No, but we don't, neighbors and kids and, we have an East Bridgewater bus that goes a hundred miles down to turn around, it uses our street as a turnaround? I mean, and that thing goes flying and it's like.
I would call the bus company.
Why does it need to do that?
You think they'd pick a better paved road to do it?
Come on, I think it's because it's the first one out of East Bridgewater when they come out. We're aligned with that, yeah, so it's.
Towns with it.
It's just like, everyone's house is getting value and ours is a beautiful home and it, it's not, it's not, it doesn't have its true value because of the street.
Which house is yours?
We're for pasture, the first one on the left.
And if you want, you don't have to, kids take their driving test, because the cones are set up perfectly.
Yeah. No, it's not funny anymore, really, it's, it's just.
Well, in fairness, hold on, in fairness, he made a joke, so let's, let's, not start.
Don't head to that.
And also, secondly, just to point this out, before everybody's voices continue to increase, let's remember, we're all on the same team here, okay? We're not the ones that are pulling the bond, we're not the ones that own the property, we're not the ones set up the cones.
But you realize a bond would guarantee a street.
I, you understand that, but you understand that I'm not the guy that owns the property, neither is he, we're doing our job here for you, for free, uh, tonight, so don't yell, I, I know you're upset.
Yeah, I have a good.
I understand you're upset, I understand, I promise you I'm listening.
Yeah.
What I'm telling you, I understand you're upset, we're here to help facilitate the solution, that's what we're trying to get accomplished, so as we get.
She said fifteen years she's been doing this, so.
I understand.
It's, it's new to us because we've only seven years.
I understand, I just wanna make sure that we direct our frustration.
So is there, is there, is there a time limit after, if this house is built, that he does the street, does he have a week to do it, a year to do it, ten years to do it?
Yeah.
Does he not get his occupancy until it's done?
No, we occupy season, I don't believe.
Oh, no.
So there you go, I'm telling you, it's not gonna be done.
No, I.
I thought that was in the, I thought that was in the new.
Well, this, this is why I invite you to come to the next meeting, when you see it, okay, because.
Did I take my chances going to court with a cease and desist order on the house?
Wait a minute, why was he willing to do, rip down the trees, rip up the sewers, do a few little things, what was that for?
So if you watch the meeting from, uh, on YouTube, go to the planning board meeting and watch the section and listen to what he said. I really, a hundred percent would tell you to do that.
So each time he came, you guys said, show us a little few things that you're gonna do.
I would just tell you that I think you should watch the planning board meeting on YouTube and then you'll understand a lot more than what we're able to. and then you'll understand a lot more than what we're able to talk about right now.
And it wasn't each time that he came, like he was here at every meeting, in fairness, right? That was the first time I had met him, I've been here for a year. Almost a year. So at the end of the day, that was the fir, it was the first step since this has been on our agenda in a year that it started to move forward with. And I may, paraphrasing, but it's in his best interest to get it all done for the bonding, to agree to the list that was listed out, for each one of the checklists to get done in order for him to be able to have the house, sell the house. But it's also in his best interest to finish the street, for him to resell the house for his property value, the property that he's building. So, yes, it's unfortunate that it's been 15 years, and it has traded hands, and it's taken longer than it has, and that the cost of material has gone up, and things of that nature. And it's not going as fast as somebody that has to live on the street. Hundred percent sympathize with that. But as far as I'm concerned, at the last meeting, it was the first step in the right direction since I've seen it in a year. True or false?
It was definitely a good step.
April, April 7, 2022.
So how did the street ever slip through the cracks when it wasn't supposed to have been done X houses ago, X number of houses ago?
There are several reasons it slipped through the cracks. I think there's several missteps here.
The main reason was, back in 2008, when the economy took a dive, that was the last lot left in there. Lots were not worth that much money at that time because the values dropped. It wasn't worth finishing the road for what the lot was. It, it, it was a practice of the town to, to hold the lot until the subdivisions were done. It worked fine when the values were high, and the builders were there, and everything was moving along. But when the economy took a dip, the value of the lot dropped down, nobody was buying houses, nobody was building houses.
Just someone take one, no more
Let me just finish. And, and, and so at that point, the subdivision sat. It took years before the value started coming back up. People had talked about coming in and doing something with it, but the value had not come up to the point now that it was gonna cost to finish the road. That's why it just sat. And then he got somebody else involved in it to buy the lot. He told them, "Oh, you know, you only gotta do this, that, the other thing." And then they investigated, they got involved in it, found out there was a lot more to it than what he had said. And then it transferred again to John Paquette and his
Which shouldn't have happened, though.
And then you can watch his story on YouTube.
Okay.
April 7, 2022, planning board meeting.
So if, if I put an addition on my house and add a bedroom, do I have to enlarge my septic? Or can I just put an addition on it?
Depends on how many bathrooms your septic is designed for.
Bathrooms.
Is it by the double bedrooms?
Bathrooms. What did I say, bedrooms?
Yeah, bedrooms.
Peter Smith's book.
So, one more thing. So John Paquette is in the, the paving business, correct? So are you guys?
So at the last meeting, the conversation was, originally, it was requested that he put three layers in when the normal street only takes two. And with the cost of, right, increased cost of materials, it was gonna far outweigh the cost to do all three layers where you only technically need two. So that was the big conversation that we had last time, which is recorded on YouTube, so that if you watch it, you can see the big movement forward, if there was a movement forward was, "I agree to do this, but I'm not gonna do the third unnecessary layer, I'll do two." And he said, he certainly sounded like he knew what he was talking about, being in the paving business, which was new to me, but good for him. So now, it's, that's where we're moving forward with. He's not here right now because it's currently under review with the engineer. We're moving forward at the next one, so all of these questions would be much better suited at the May 5 meeting. Because all we're gonna do is spin a big circle, because we don't have the answers while it's still under review, he's not here, there's missing documents and things of that nature, but trust me, your frustration is not lost on the board.
But the, but, but what he says, he'll do the bond, that still doesn't guarantee your street?
No, it just seems like our best course right now.
I think we are having the best interest of you guys, seems like, in a way.
It's like our power, our head over right now, you know, that's, that's
Okay, so he walks away, goes street, so I'll, I'll see this till the day I die.
So hold on, let me actually, let me just, maybe I'm, maybe I'm speaking on a turn here. If I'm a developer and I own property, and I'm gonna build a piece of, I'm gonna build a house in the final to turn around and flip it or sell, right? Isn't it in my best interest for the seller to come in and drive down a nice new road? Especially if I own the paving company, and I definitely don't wanna deal with
Hold on a second, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sell the house, and I'm gonna pay $100,000 for the street, or I can just sell the house for a little bit cheaper and make more money that way? I'd sell the house and leave, leave the crappy street. I mean, if you wanna talk dollars and cents
Well, no, I get it if you wanna go down that route, but I think I think there's a lot of conversations that happen in between there.
It seems like, since he's in the paving business, you guys are kind of bend it, like letting him sort of
Well, I can certainly, I can certainly assure you that's not the case, because I didn't even know he was in the paving business until you just mentioned it.
What if, what if this new buyer wasn't in a paving business?
I'm telling you right now, I didn't even know he was in the paving business until you just said.
Okay, no, I, I understand.
Because I'd be shocked if I see a street before I die.
Well, we have, we have a step
You have no leverage, is what you're saying?
No, we're using everything that we possibly can, and this is the best way to go forward. If you, if
I certainly invite you to May 5
Okay, you know what I want?
Watch that meeting, April 7, 2022.
If he's here, have that conversation with him. I don't know what else to tell you. I mean, what would you like us to do?
Have him do the street before he builds the house?
Have him do the street before he builds the house, I don't know.
I'll take my, I'll take my chance of going to court. They held up the guy's building on
Well, then you're sure not to have a street, because he's not gonna wanna deal with it. You take him to court, I guarantee
I'll have a whole house there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll keep the lot, I'll keep the empty lot, and I'll, I'll, I'll stay with the shitty street.
All, here, here's what I can tell you, is the town has no leverage at this point, as far as getting your road done, unless at town meeting, the town voted to take the street and voted to go in there and spend the money to fix it.
We were supposed to do that until there was the change of, changing of the guards previous.
I mean, it's not like we're
Where we are, where we are, here's what we need to focus on. Hold on. The frustration of the past is, is understandable. I guess it's not even understandable because we don't live there, right? You do. But if we keep talking about what happened 15 years ago, or in 2008, when the changing of the guard and the missing of documents, and things that should have happened,
That's recent.
Or what his occupation is. All I'm telling you, he was here last time. He proposed a solution. We said we will send it out to the engineers for the final agreement on it, and he's coming back on May 5 to discuss it. Can that not be enough for now? Because I promise you, since I got on this board, pasture lane has been on this agenda, and it's always been passed because nobody's talked about it. So for the love of God, can I ask for the sake of the fact we're moving forward, to just delay this conversation until May 5, so we can actually be productive?
We won't be yet, but
I'm sure she'll speak on your behalf, because she lives on the street, she's obviously very adamant about having your best interest at heart as well. So all I'm saying is, and I promise you, the house isn't gonna be built, and the road is not gonna not be built by May 6. So on the May 19, we can continue the conversation. But we're at least moving forward where this has not been moving forward until last meeting, and now we're moving forward. So your frustrations have been well documented, but we need to at least say, instead of focusing on what's happening, now that you've brought up your concern that there's not gonna be a road there by the time you die, that will be taught, taken into consideration, is our future, in our future conversations with Mr. Paquette.
Because there's a possibility we could ask him to clear that brush from the side of the road.
Yeah, wait until he's coming back to
It's just piles.
Do, get the piles of
May 5. That's all I have, that's all I can
Yeah, but how do you rip down trees and then just leave them? Like, finish the job. He started something, put the, and get rid of the cones. Can he fix the sewers, just put the something in it, or he can't do that till he does the street?
Yeah, so did you, did you see that up on 106 over the last week, there was details and they were cutting out the sewers? It's because they were redoing the road, and that, so they have to repair it, so he has, it's a step.
Can he put
It's a step.
I can't look at this.
And you have to sometimes go back in construction, so like, if you were renovating your bathroom, you'd have to rip it apart and deal with that harmony.
You have, you, we have this much to go in.
So actually, let's, let's have, let's have a good productive conversation.
Let's put something down.
Hold on, let's have a good productive conversation. In order for, let's look at it this way, the cone, the cones are an eyesore. Hold on, the cones are an eyesore, right?
And they're a traffic hazard.
And a traffic hazard. However, in order for him to move forward with the development of the street, he had to cut out the septic system. So that in and of itself, although the cones are a pain, that in and of itself is moving forward with the development of the street. Is that, am I wrong with that?
No, you're, you're
Okay, so although it's an eyesore, it's at least a step in the right direction, which apparently we haven't had since 1986.
But also, but they still, they still leveled that sewer before they finished the road.
So, hold on, ready? So I'm gonna tell you another thing. So if they, just let's play devil's advocate. Say they built the house. If an appraiser goes out, and you say the streets is as bad as that is, and they start investigating it, and then they're gonna start seeing all this stuff, they're not gonna be able to miss any of this stuff anymore. That you're, they're gonna have a problem with the street not being done. Trust me. That is, that, I'm a renter, and I think Tina would back me up. Don't you think that the
I was very surprised that all of the sales have gone through the way that they have.
But now, now with the cones on the road and the tightening of the appraisals again.
I don't know.
But
All right.
They, they still
I'm just saying that because I saw, I just, I had three pasture lanes listed.
But this was a different time period. It was a different time period, and now it's all over this town hall. So if you go to the assessors office, or you go to the building offices and appraiser, and you're pulling files, they're gonna find this.
Or our, or our minutes.
I hope so.
Or our YouTube videos.
But when they asphalt the street, they, they leveled the sewers first, and then they do the finish coat of asphalt. So that's all being wide open now. So when they do a street, they, they level off the sewers, then they come by and do the coat. So there's no reason to leave the sewers wide open right now.
Correct. Yeah, they should be graded and cemented around.
Yeah, so if you put some cement or something for now. And then in front of my driveway, it's all crap. Is there any way someone, the town can just patch, do some light patching? Really?
Because he made it so that when he puts the coat on
Where my driveway meets the street, it's just a crumbled mess. I had to take, pull up my, um, my mail box and fix it.
We're in progress.
Okay.
You're next, you're next to the vacant one?
No, she's, she's kind of across from it. But she goes up, so where he chipped it out to make everything level, he like chipped where her driveway goes up. So now it's been bumped to get onto her driveway.
If you do watch the thing, you see the guy, it might give you a decent impression. I got a good feel off the guy, if you know what I mean?
I've watched past ones, and it's, you guys want to say past one, or
Stellane, and then you say that was actually a question, I was there.
I, I signed in to the best, was you guys were mumbled, like it wasn't clear.
But, but I got a, a good feel off the guy, if that means anything, you know what I mean?
So we work on feelings? That's how you mark, yeah, okay.
It helps a lot better.
That's fine, okay.
I'd feel a lot better if the guy didn't see
You know what, can I give a sign that says private way? I think a sign, since we're a private street, let's, let's, let's be that way. Don't you think?
So I, I guess
We won't have
I'll park, I'll park my four cars in front of that lot. Because it's, it's like I can park there legally, correct? So I'll park four cars in front of that lot, before a foundation is built, I'll see a street. Goodbye.
I just go, I guess I just
Can, can you write something down for the next street?
We're going to Florida, but I'll
No, I have the letter.
I mean, if you give her, then she can bring it in.
And your friend
I'm begging for a street, like, why do I, what, what, what do you guys want?
You don't do streets, just say it out. We don't make street
I know, I understand what you do.
We're not in the paving business.
It's been like a year now to two years that we've been dealing with this every single meeting. We have no
No, no, I, I've watched past ones, you don't You say astellane and then move on, and it's not your fault, but, I know.
That right there is probably the most important, one of the most important things that we could have discussed here tonight as well, is your friend, last meeting, we got progress. This meeting, you voiced your opinion. Here's the other thing. It's much easier for us to continue to work moving forward if people that are frustrated don't come, like, we're the ones doing it. Because we're not.
No, no, I know.
Well, I, I don't know, man, the video might seem otherwise, but
It sounds like if someone can come in and tell you what
And, and in defense of Mark, we're not working off of feelings, we're working off of the zoning laws. I know you said that out of frustration, but at the same time, I think we all are working off the feeling of, wow, isn't it nice that we don't have to just pass by pasture lane, to your point? We actually get to have an educated conversation about being productive and proactive moving forward. So I think if you were able to watch that, at some point, whether on vacation or when you come back, we will have to work on
I would like to designate our street as, as private, no? I don't know.
I just want those kids to know that.
So
I just feel like it's
And if you wanna park your cars there, I, I, as much as I don't have, as much as I don't have the authority to, to pave your road, right, or to tell you about the cones, I don't have the authority to tell you where you can and can't park your street.
We only pay the taxes, I'm sure you get a lot, it's like
As somebody that pays back taxes in town, I get it, and I, I, that's why we sympathize with your frustration, but just please understand where it's being directed.
Okay.
Fine, the positive.
We're working, we're getting, I promise you. Because it bothers me to have that on our agenda every single time, and love to knock it out of the park.
Right, get some results, okay. All right, well, thank you.
Cool. Enjoy your vacation.
Yeah.
Travel safe.
All right, thanks.
All right.
So, more discussion, 5G.
How do you make the motion to adjourn the meeting?
You wanna continue 5G 40 hour and the minutes to the next meeting? Hold on, wait a minute, March 3rd and March 17th, we have to do, we have to do the one signature for the meeting minutes because it's been three meetings, what I already did. I'll make a motion to approve March 3, 2022, minutes are written.
Motion is to second.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 17th minute, uh, 2022 minutes are written.
Motion is to second.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I wasn't supposed to say aye on March 17th, sorry. I retract my aye.
Oh, then we actually need to
Yeah, it was over.
We need to wait until that come out.
I missed that one, so you work by yourself. I got you, I got you, Mark.
And so we will continue 40 hour and 5G and, um, anything else on the next agenda, I think a motion to adjourn?
Second, third, and fourth.
Okay, motion, second. More favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, once again, the government, the government